Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the regular council meeting to order. And this evening, before we move into the formal part of the meeting, I would like to move to the delegations that are present here tonight for a United Way Community Spirit Award. The employees of Surrey have a long and generous history with the United Way in the Lower Mainland. And tonight, I am very proud to say that our employees are being recognized for their outstanding efforts. I would like to call up Brenda Ainsley of the United Way. And Brenda is the Vice President of Resource Development, and she is here tonight to make a special award on behalf of -- for our staff on behalf of the United Way. So, good evening, Brenda.
Thank you. And good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm really honored to be here tonight to recognize the United Way campaign that happened this past fall. We gave out a number of awards a week ago at our Spirit Awards. There's five awards that are given out, and in each award category, there's either five to seven nominees. And the City of Surrey and the Canadian Union of Public Employees Local 402, as well as the International Association of Firefighters Local 1271, were one of the nominees in the Innovation category. And they were the successful winner. So, I'm very happy.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to tell you why this was so significant. The innovation was recognized for the partnership between the city and the QP Local 402, where Jeannie Kilby, who's the president of the local, partnered with the campaign chair from the city, Jeff Welch, and they delivered over 40 crew talks throughout the city, which is just a phenomenal amount of time and energy and commitment on both sides, as well as those two individuals. So, we really thank you for that, Jeannie. And Jeff, who's not here tonight. But I'd like to recognize Josh, who represents the city's side, too, and I think will be taking things forward. The other really innovative and exciting thing that they did is QP 402's Community and Social Impact Committee passed a motion to be the first union in the Lower Mainland to contribute per capita funding in a sort of a special fundraising endeavor. So, it's the first union that's ever done that, and it came from their Community and Social Impact Committee, as I said. And the money is going towards the avenues of change. That is an initiative that United Way funds in five areas, but the one that these funds are donated to is the one in your very own Guilford neighborhood. And that initiative is about helping increase child vulnerability so that when kids arrive to school and kindergarten, they're ready to learn. So, we really appreciate you taking that initiative and hopefully being a model for other unions. So, thank you so much, Jeannie. And to top it all off, the amount raised between the International Association of Firefighters, QP Local 402, and the City of Surrey is a whopping $228,000. So, behalf -- So, on behalf of all those people who aren't here tonight, I offer you their thanks and gratitude.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. And thank you to QP and to IFF and to all the people that work so hard in the United Way Committee, to Jeff Welch. It is not a surprise to me that as a city of innovators that we would be the ones to win the Innovation Award. So, thank you very much for carrying on that tradition of innovation and the spirit of giving in our community. Would you like to come up so that we may take a photo with you in honor of your recognition tonight? Thank you. Counsel? If I could now ask Counsel to move into the adoption of minutes, Special Counsel of February 22.
I'll move second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be adopted, Regular Counsel, Land Use, February 22.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes to be adopted, Regular Counsel, Public Hearing, February 22.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And if I could have a resolution to move forward, Corporate Report Number R055. Counsel will recall this afternoon, we had a presentation on sustainability, and that is the corporate report dealing with that.
I'll move that forward. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And it's a very interesting report. It will be going out for public consultation before they set the framework for what is Sustainability Charter 2.0. And I would encourage members of the public to go online and take a look at that report and to be actively engaged in any of the public consultation over the next month and a half. So, thank you and thank you, Anna Matheson, our Sustainability Manager, for all your work on that report. It's very well done. I look forward to the results of the consultation session around it. Moving on. Madam Clerk, to the delegation public hearing portion of the evening, Public Hearing Number One, please.
Okay. The first bylaw is zoning amendment, Bylaw 18666. The address is 7192 124th Street. The applicant is Satnam Paul. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential secondary suite to neighborhood commercial. The applicant's proposing to develop a two-story commercial office building. In addition, there's a development variance permit being sought to reduce the setbacks and increase the building height in order to achieve a more pedestrian-friendly or pedestrian-oriented streetscape.
I do not have anyone signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Bylaw Number One on the agenda? First call, second call, third and final call. Thank you. Madam Clerk, Bylaw Number Two, please.
It's zoning amendment, Bylaw 18667. The address is 2825 159th Street. The applicant is Greenway Adira Ventures Limited. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant's proposing to develop 67 townhouse units.
Thank you. Again, I have no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Bylaw Number Two? First call, second call, third and final call. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Zoning Amendment, Bylaw 18668. The address is 1489 126A Street. The applicant is Ping Wu. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential to single-family residential oceanfront. The applicant's proposing to construct a new single-family dwelling on an oceanfront lot.
I see no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Bylaw Number Three on the agenda? Yes, sir? Please come forward. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Madam Mayor, it's Scott Higgins at 13641 Malabar Avenue in White Rock. I've been asked to come on behalf of the neighbors next door to this property, Paul and Catherine Huff, at 12626 15th Avenue. And just to -- for clarification, there is a -- the current build that's there had a variance for a fascia encroachment that comes on to the property on 15th Avenue. And there is a new survey stake there, and the owners, the Huffs at 15th Avenue, just want to make sure that the new build is built within the property line as it is surveyed.
Let's ask Mr. Planner, relative to the existing encroachment, would that be corrected through the new build?
Madam Mayor, yes. The proposed building is in compliance with the proposed zone.
It is in compliance, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That was it?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Last call. Thank you very much. That concludes the public hearing portion of tonight's agenda. Moving into committee reports. Could I have, please, Public Safety?
Public Safety Committee?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
And I'll move the minutes of the Social Policy Advisory Committee, December 9th, 2016.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, Minutes of January 27, 2016, be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the minutes of Social Policy, February 3, 2016. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the Agriculture and Food Security Advisory Committee, Minutes of February 5, 2016, be received.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Move the Minutes of Senior Advisory and Accessibility Committee, of February 9, 2016, be approved.
Second.
Those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the Minutes of the Parks, Recreation and Sport Tourism Committee Meeting of February 17.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'd also like to move the recommendations be adopted.
Second.
And, Madam Mayor, if I could just for a second.
Yes. It's on the floor, Counsel.
Thank you. And one of the recommendations in the packages for the building of the bandstand at Francis Park in Fleetwood, and I just wanted to recognize the work that the Fleetwood Community Association has done on this. And I know Rickard is with us tonight, and he's put a lot of time and effort, as has his group.
Community as a whole, yes.
To bring this to fruition. And it came through the Parks Committee last month and was very well-received. So, I just wanted to say great work.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor, and thanks for the work of your committee. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the -- Madam Mayor, I'll move the Minutes of the Heritage Commission for the 20th of January.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the recommendations.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. I have two proclamations this evening. And let's get to them here. They are Earth Hour Watch 2016 through to March 19, 2016, and the World Down Syndrome Day, March 21. Whereas Earth Hour has grown from a one-city initiative in 2007 to a global movement, uniting people to take action to create a sustainable world. And whereas Earth Hour brings together communities from across the world celebrating a commitment to the planet by symbolically switching off lights for one designated hour from 8:30 PM to 9:30 PM on Saturday, March 19, 2016. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Heffler, do hereby declare March 19, 2016, as Earth Hour 2016 in the City of Surrey. World Down Syndrome Day, March 21, 2016. Whereas World Down Syndrome Day is a global awareness day which has been officially observed by the United Nations since 2012. And whereas one in every 700 babies born in Canada today has Down Syndrome. And whereas there are currently over 40,000 Canadian citizens who have Down Syndrome. And whereas the City of Surrey values our citizens with Down Syndrome and their families. And whereas the City of Surrey fully supports the rights, the inclusion, and the well-being of all individuals with Down Syndrome. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Linda Heffler, do hereby declare March 21 as World Down Syndrome Day in the City of Surrey. That is all I have on that. So, I'm going to move directly into corporate reports.
Move Corporate Report R043, Local Area Service Bylaw for Bridgeway East, Phase 3 and 4 Vacuum Sewer System Replacement Program. And that's a program that's estimated to cost $15.5 million.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R044, Award of Contract for Intersection Improvements in an amount of $1,581,771.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R045, Award of Contract for the FERC Sanitary Force Main Construction in the amount of $3,741,491.25.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Corporate Report R046, Award of Contract, the FERC Sanitary Pump Station and Oil-Controlled Bio-Bed Construction in the amount of $5,497,065.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Counselor, I think you just like to spend this money.
I do.
That finance tier can hardly --
I'm particular about the dollars, Madam Mayor. I'm particular about the dollars. So, move Corporate Report R047, Responsibility for the Coalbrook Dyking District and Surrey Dyking District.
Second. Okay. I'll call the question on that. This one, happily, we're getting some money from the province in order to take on the responsibility of that dyking district. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
Move Corporate Report R048, the Petola Bridge Replacement Project Development.
All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. I want to be clear that this report is a process, part of the process of the P3 application funding with TransLink, the City of New Westminster, and the City of Surrey. And it defines that we are not at all interested in tolling singularly another bridge across the Fraser River in the absence of a more integrated mobility pricing program in place. And the length of time it will take to develop a mobility pricing program is probably the same length of time it will take to construct the bridge. So, this allows us to move forward with our application, but in no way defines that we're in support of tolls in the absence of a more regional mobility pricing option. R049, Wally Boulevard Lease of the Winter Shelter.
Move Recommendations.
Second.
Counsel, it's on the floor, Counselor. Counselor LeFrank.
Thank you so much. I was so pleased to see this corporate report. I think it makes great sense to be extending the winter shelter throughout the year. I think that it's been a really successful project, and I'm just so proud of the work that's been done by the community. Through you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Planner, or, sorry, Jean, how the community has been responding to the winter shelter.
Through you, Madam Mayor, I think that it's been quite a success. I think that there are members of the community that lives nearby that go and volunteer at the winter shelter. I think it's the first since we've had winter shelter in operation. And I think that, in general, those who are involved in the neighborhood are telling us that it's quite good and that they're better than their expectation.
Thank you so much. And I'd also like to say that B.C. Housing has been such a great partner. I'm really hoping that they do come forward with the funding that allows us to extend this service for 12 months instead of just six. So, thank you so much for your work on this. And also to staff who have made this such a success.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor. I think it really did -- was very successful efforts this year. And I thank the people who are organizing the community committee because I think that was very helpful to have as well. Counselor Villanue?
I just wanted to add that I believe that Lookout that operates the winter shelter has done an incredible job because they have really known how to reach out to the community. And if you stop by that shelter, the way they deal with people that are utilizing the facility is just remarkable. Caring, and they're also connecting them with outreach services to hopefully house a number of them and provide wraparound services. So, I think it's an incredible juncture in the way the city responds to dealing with homeless people. They have a lot of dignity.
I was very proud of that this year. So, I will call the question on the report. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Move Corporate Report R050, the Infrastructure Project in Federal Funding.
Second. Okay. It's on the floor. Counselor Gill.
Madam Mayor, I just want to congratulate staff for being so proactive. I think that Surrey has identified $3.7 billion worth of projects. Out of that, the big project obviously being the LRT project for 2.6. But certainly, I think the credit to our staff in terms of being able to identify something on short order and having shovel-ready projects, we were very successful in the past. And I predict that, given where we're at and what we're situated, that, in fact, we will be able to capitalize on some of the programs and some of the funds that are available for public transit, green infrastructure, and social infrastructure. So, well done.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor LeFrank?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through you, to Mr. City Manager. I noticed that social infrastructure is included, but there is no housing, social housing identified in the corporate report. Can you just tell us what the plan is to put those projects on the agenda?
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Through you, to Counselor LeFrank. We are working on quite a few initiatives. There's initiatives we're working with partners on, which we may, in the end, apply for funding either on our behalf or for supplementary funding. We are also doing a review of some of the city lands we own to see if there's also projects we can get going on those city lands. I think this list is not exhaustive. It's not every project that necessarily we'll be applying for, but what we could pull together with detail at this time. But we'll definitely be adding those kind of projects.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I think it's fair to say that until we get a better defined understanding of what each of those three pillars of funding will require in an application process, some of the housing ones, we're holding in abeyance until we have a clearer understanding of that as well. So, I'll call the question on the identification of the funding project. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. The rezoning, R051.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
All those. This is the Bolivar Park Neighborhood and Extension Area. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
Move R052.
Second. And this is the Quoemeus Point Park Neighborhood Area 2, the request for zoning changes as well. One was successful, and this particular one was not. So, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried.
I'll move the recommendation on the John Horner House, the funding for the leaking roof.
Second.
Leaking roof in one of our heritage homes. All those in favor? Do I have a seconder on that?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Contract Award?
Move Corporate Report R054, Award of Contract for Construction of Surrey's RCPT to Tavatch when the expansion of the former city hall in the amount of $5,239,971, excluding GST on this one, particular one.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Now, this saves us from constructing a new -- thank you. And we have dealt with our Sustainability Charter. So, moving on to bylaws.
Madam Mayor, we have something on table.
Oh, we have one on the table. Oh, yes. Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation for funding for Bridle Week, sponsorship request. This is regarding Quatlin Polytechnic University and their fashion program and students participating in that. Could I have a seconder?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. I've got ahead of myself, so now we're moving into the business arising out of the public hearing.
Move Third on One, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, that's carried.
Move Developmental Variance Permit Number 79140363.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move Third on Two.
Second.
All those in -- oh. Yes. Counselor Villanue?
I just wanted to speak to it a minute because there was no one speaking at the public hearing but a few letters that we've received. And I think it's noteworthy that we should, sort of, as this project moves forward, really look at the traffic circulation in that area. That seems to be a major concern. The density is growing, and the traffic issues in that area with the new townhouses coming in is intensifying. So, it's worth a look, I believe.
House Counselor will bring that forward prior to its final and comments on the traffic circular pattern. Okay. I'll call the question on it. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Move Third on Three.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Permit approvals, DVP?
On Four, move the Developmental Variance Permit 79150431. Zero, zero, be approved.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On Five, move DVP 791607, zero, zero, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On Six, move DVP 79160003, zero, zero, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On Seven, move the DVP 79150372, zero, zero, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to, just for purposes of discussion, I'm going to move the TUP permit. I do have hesitations, reservations, but I know my colleague in the corner there has some comments. I'll second it.
To put it on the table? It's on the table. Counselor Woods.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This afternoon, I had an occasion to have a conversation with our Police Chief, Assistant Commissioner Forty, and Inspector Gallup on this matter. Unfortunately, the RCMP advised that they had only received the organizer's full security plan this afternoon, and they need time to review it and assess it. So, Madam Mayor, I'm going to put a motion on the table, amend the motion, that before this matter moved forward for approval, that it be referred back to the FAST Committee to allow the RCMP to conduct a proper assessment of the security plan and make proper recommendations back to Counsel. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor. Someone could you second that? I'll second that. Thank you. Okay. Could we include on there some clear definition of what kind of firearms are at this show? Because I thought it was hunting rifles, but I now understand it's more than that. I'd like an understanding of exactly what's going on at the show.
Madam Mayor, my understanding is that there are, in fact, handguns at the show. And that's mentioned that in the security plan, and that's one thing that the RCMP is going to be looking at. Do you -- I've got reservations about that.
Yeah. So do I. So, are you asking to come back? Go to FAST, have a better analysis of what the show is regarding and the elements of the show, as well as the security plan, and then come back here?
That's my -- yes.
Okay. That's on the table. All those in favor of that? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, on Nine, move that Counsel support the issuance of DVP 7915016501.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On Ten, move that Counsel support the issuance of DVP 7915021901.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, that's carried.
On Number Eleven, move that Counsel support the issuance of DVP 7915008700.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Final adoption?
Move final adoption on Number Twelve, which is the 2016-2020 Consolidated Financial Plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. All those in favor, opposed, carried. The operating.
Move final adoption on the operating, 13.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move final adoption on the Roads and Traffic Safety Operating Financial Plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 15, move final adoption on the Capital Financial Plan.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 16, move final adoption on the Surrey Secondary Suite bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 17, move final adoption on the Cultural and Recreational Personal Tax Citation Amendment.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 18, move final adoption on the Surrey Protection bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that one's carried. 19.
You have to call them.
Is there anyone wishing to make representation on this particular bylaw, which is a close and remove, a dedication of a portion of road adjacent to 1928971 Avenue by Council Initiative? First call, second call, third and final call.
Move final adoption on 19, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And again, is there anyone wishing to make a representation on the next bylaw, which is close and remove a dedication or a portion of road adjacent to 16540 Parkview Place bylaw? Seeing no one, move to final. First call, second call, third and final call.
Move final adoption on 20, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, that one's carried. Final, close and remove highway portion of a road adjacent to 16616 Parkview Place and 16609102 Avenue. Is there anyone wishing to make representation on this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call.
Move final adoption on 21.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Introduction bylaws.
On 22, move first.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
And all those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 23, move first.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
And all those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 24, move first.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move third.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
On 25, move introduction.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move first.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move second.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
The public hearing we set for April 11th at City Hall.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. Delegation requests, the Labor Council.
I'll move a beheaded CIC. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the approval of the financial statements for the Newton BIA.
Second.
All those, first, I think we have to receive.
We receive?
Receive all of the information. The audited financial statements and the interest.
Second.
Yeah, thank you. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Just to be sure, each of these BIAs have had their audited statements and their business plans reviewed by our Economic Development Office, have they?
Madam Mayor, that's. That's my understanding is that the Economic Development Office has received and reviewed these statements.
Thank you. Okay, next one, Cloverdale BIA.
Move receipt of the Cloverdale BIA minutes and audited financial statements.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And move receipt of the downtown Surrey BIAs minutes and audited financial statements.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
I'll move the appointment of the parking patrol. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Is there anyone with a notice of motion or any other business? Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, and we are adjourned.